Good evening. You are at the Oshkosh Area School District Regular Board Meeting, Board of Education Meeting. Based on ongoing health issues involving COVID-19, the school board meetings will be held for the public in a virtual environment in the interest of everyone's health and safety at this time and for only a short, longer, short period longer. It is our sincere hope to return to meetings in person with the public present as soon as possible. The Board will be using a Zoom format to host its virtual meeting and will be live streaming the public meeting on the Oshkosh Media YouTube channel, www.youtube.com/c/oshkoshmedia. Are we in compliance with the open meeting law notification?
Yes, we are.
All right, thank you. Please call the roll.
Petal.
Present.
Silaji.
Here.
Right.
Here.
Wyman.
Here.
Carlin.
Here.
Herzog.
Here.
Carnes.
Here.
We have Quorum. Thank you. Dr. Davis, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So, we've changed this meeting up a little bit in regards to that we wanted to celebrate and recognize February as Black History Month. And even more, we wanted to take it a step further to recognize a student-led event for Black History Month at Oshkosh North that took place on February 15th that I think was its first of its kind. And we wanted to invite some of the staff and some of the youth that were involved in putting that event together. So if I could invite Bobby Cummings, she's an instructional coach at Oshkosh North and is the advisor to the Black Student Union at Oshkosh North, Harmony Obalala, sorry, and I didn't catch your name. So if all three of you could come to the table, that's right in front.
You can slide another chair.
Just pull up one of the chairs that are behind you. So also want to recognize that Harmony is being supported by her grandmother this evening who is in the room with us. So we wanted to offer you the opportunity to describe to the community, you guys will be on camera, just so you know, you'll be live streamed to the public. And so this is an opportunity to talk about Black History Month, the event that you put on, and you know, a little bit about, you know, the Black Student Union as well. So kind of all aspects of it. I don't have a time limit for you, so it's your canvas. You put your colors and your words on it and go with it. So, all right?
All right, well, you get two pages front and back and Harmony's in music here. Go start.
Yeah. So, hi, everyone. My name is Avians American. This is Bobby Cummings. We both co-advice the Oshkosh North Black Student Union. I currently serve as the cultural diversity advocate at North and she serves as an instructional coach. We're honored to be asked to speak to you all today, give you a word out of the assembly about what we say about Black History Month.
So to start with, our B.S.U. students really deserve all of their credit. They made the assembly come to fruition. They have worked tirelessly this entire school year to make February powerful, meaningful month for our entire school community. Our B.S.U. at North consists of about 55 students who are committed to making Oshkosh North a place where Black history and culture is known and celebrated. B.S.U. is also a safe place for students of color to advocate for change and support each other in a primarily white space in order to grow as leaders and as learners.
Yes, so we kicked off our February with some things, Spirit Days throughout the week to promote community education, including Blackout Tuesday, which is where students and staff were challenged to wear black while dressing all black and then were encouraged to support Black-owned businesses locally and nationally within the state and the country. So we also had a Divine Nine Day where students were encouraged to do some research on historical Black fraternities and sororities and wear the colors that resonated with them and the philanthropy that they associated with the most. And so the Spirit Week had high participation and it definitely succeeded in the goal of spreading different awareness and education.
The purpose of our assembly last Tuesday was to highlight Black history and culture and to get up together as a school community to celebrate diversity in our building. There were several important guests who came to the assembly, including quite a few school board members, so thank you so much for your attendance. We also had our superintendent, Brian Davis, along with members of the executive team that came. We partner regularly with UW-Oshkosh and we were able to have the chancellor, Andrew Levitt, come along with the chief of staff and their diversity initiatives director as well. And then a really extra special guest was Sheila Knack. She's a member of Oshkosh 94. So she was one of 94 students at UW-Oshkosh in 1968 who was arrested in jail for advocating for social change on campus. So to have someone from that group come and support the kids was really cool and powerful and on top of it, they got to learn some history here in our community as well.
Yep. So with the following steps, we have welcomed Dr. Alfonso Simpson Jr. to the podium to address the school. He sang the National Black Anthem, lifted every voice and sang, and followed it with a brief history and challenged to challenge different teachers to bring back the lyrics in their classroom from that song. And Dr. Alfonso Simpson is currently the director of the African-American Studies Program at UW-Oshkosh and an associate professor of sociology. He's also the vice chancellor of the National Council for Black Studies, which was really nice to be able to have him come. And we ended up congratulating two of our Oshkosh North winners for the Dr. Martin Luther King essay, the first being Julia Fox and the third place being Ruby Snow.
What, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ruby Snow got first place and Julia got third.
They're still both students, Ruby and Snow. He moved on to talk about African-American Studies and the Divine Nine Sororities and Fraternities, which some students had already had the knowledge from the dress-up days during the Spirit Week. So then he finished off his speech by encouraging the audience to imagine a world without Black people and all the incredible inventions that they brought to modern society, such as the traffic light and elevators and car engines and postamps. So it was really nice.
So along with Dr. Simpson's keynote address, we also had some student performances. So we started the assembly with a step routine that the students choreographed themselves. They met together, they practiced on their own time, and they really brought the energy and kind of kicked it off. It was great, they did fantastic. And then obviously, we had Harmony came and she did a spoken word piece, which she's going to perform for you shortly. And we also had Dr. Simpson's eldest daughter, Idia. She's an Oshkosh North alumni who came and sang the song Stand Up by Cynthia Arivo. And it was a really powerful moment. The audience at the end was standing and they were clapping along with the lyrics. And you know, it's not something you can really script and it was just a really, really meaningful, powerful experience and the kids definitely felt the love after that. So today, we have Harmony here with us who is going to perform her spoken word piece, Harmonious Dream.
I have a dream that one day I will not be judged by the color of my skin but for the content of my character. I have a dream that one day George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Tamir Rice, Ahmaud Aubrey, and so many more won't have to leave so early because when your skin is seen as a weapon, you are never unarmed. I have a dream someday I won't have to breathe for my brothers and sisters who cannot. I have a dream that when we tell people to say their names, they won't ask which ones. I have a dream that protests will be seen as cries for the unheard and not as noncompliance. But I will always speak for my people because silence is violent and passive is complacent. I have a dream one day being able to say I see color isn't a bad thing because I'm proud to be Black. I have a dream that one day my people not becoming hashtags isn't something to rejoice about because it'll be normal. As Frederick Douglass once said, "If there is no struggle, there is no progress." Those who profess to favor freedom but yet depreciate agitation are men who want crops without plowing up the ground. They want rain without thunder and lightning. They want the ocean without the awful roar of its many waters. My job is to speak for those who can't, but my hope is someday I won't have to. I have a dream one day our intolerance for injustice will not be seen as Black crime. I have a dream one day Black history can be a major and not just an elective because you see my people have made oceans move by courage and made light with song. They turn water into wine because my people are gods on earth. I have a dream that justice for all will be a movement, not just a moment, because injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. I have a dream one day my future children will not be judged for the color of their skin but by the content of their character. And I have a dream that one day the rest of the world does too. Thank you.
Thank you. So, yeah, on behalf of the Board, I want to thank all of you and I want to thank all of the students that were involved in putting on this event and making it an educational and awareness-growing activity that had a huge impact on everyone that was there that day. It was beyond belief, the impact that that event had on everyone that was in that room. So I hope that there's more events like this to come. And I love the fact that it's that you're creating awareness about Black history, Black owners, Black inventors, Black educators, that there is so much more there than what's, you know, being fully expressed in the world in regards to this. So we thank you for putting on this event. We thank you for your gift. We thank you for the rest of the students and the gifts that they brought to that event. So, and I'm sure glad that you all made it today.
Good night, everyone.
Questions?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to say, I don't want to put any pressure on you all or anything, but I would love to see that become an annual event at North because it was so amazing. So kudos to all of you.
Yeah, we're happy to, as long as there's interest in this, we'll definitely carry this for a while, for sure.
Absolutely. And it won't also just be for specifically Black History Month. I definitely plan on implementing something for every visiting group that should be recognized.
Great.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
So next, we have approval of the agenda.
It's hard to top that, huh?
Is there anything that everyone, that anyone would like to change?
No.
To move? Seeing none? Okay. Next, we are on to the Board Administrative Reports. I'm going to forego my president's report because I think that we had students and staff in here that did an awesome report of an event that we all went to. So I'm going to pass it on to Dr. Davis for superintendent's report.
Great, thanks. So for the superintendent's good news report for tonight, again, I continue to have some great activities occurring in the district and wanted to be able to highlight some of them. Merrill Elementary is beginning a Trout in the Classroom program. Fifth graders will be caring for trout fry and will be responsible for feeding water tests and more. As part of the experience, students will be taught different lessons on water quality, ecosystems, biology, and conservation. So thanks for all the work in developing those important lessons. Students at Carl Treger Middle School recently participated in the coin war to support the American Hearts Association. Students collected over 180 pounds of coins totaling over $1,700. So way to go to the Treger students involved in that activity. The Carl Treger fourth and fifth graders recently had an opportunity to participate in the Battle of the Books. Students came to the media center on Wednesdays to read, do practice questions, and discuss the books that were in the battle this year. So looks like a lot of fun in the media center over at Treger. The Oshkosh West Forensics Team took first place, it took a first-place trophy at the tournament held in Slinger earlier this month. In addition to the team's success, there were numerous individual awards in solo, serious acting, duo interpretation, and moments in history speaking. Congratulations to the West Forensics Team and keep up the good work. The Oaklawn Cake Kids Group made about 40 sandwiches with snacks to donate to the Hope Fridge located behind Wagner's Market in Oshkosh. Students worked together in an assembly line to quickly assemble and even decorate the bags. So way to go, Oaklawn Cake Kids. Oshkosh West recently hosted Oshkosh North in the High School Adaptive Sports League Floor Hockey Game. The event featured a number of athletes competing from both schools, along with performances from the Oshkosh West Pep Band and Dance Team members. The Spartans came out victorious in the contest, but the event was a great experience for everyone involved. Third and fourth graders at Emeline Cook recently got to walk on Miller's Bay ice to experience an afternoon of ice skating with Dr. Eric's Skate Club. We're grateful for this opportunity and to Dr. Eric for coordinating it. And we know that this is a great opportunity for so many students throughout the district to get out and enjoy the winter experience here in Oshkosh. Many of our students took time to celebrate the Olympics, read elementary classes, learned interesting information about the Olympics, and tried some of the challenges in their classrooms. Each-day classes had a Minute to Win It Challenge and festivities ended with a race to wrap a few lucky staff members in toilet paper, which sounds like fun. First through eighth grade students in our Whatever It Takes program also participated in their own Olympics. Students connected math, science, social studies, and gym in hands-on activities and included creating miniature ski hills, physical activities, scoring, and researching other countries and cultures. The Encompass Program at Oshkosh North recently partnered with the school's community program, IDMS program and vocational program to collect hygiene products and donate to various community programs. Additionally, the Oshkosh North Polaris Honor Roll Society recently participated in the Polar Plunge to benefit Special Olympics of Wisconsin. Two brave students, Miles and Autumn, jumped in the very cold Lake Woinibago. North raised over $1,500 for Special Olympics for that event. So congratulations to those two. We love seeing our students giving back and doing good in our community and that, I can assure you, is very cold experience. Congratulations to them. Oakwood students from all grades have been busy participating in STEM challenges, team-building challenges, as well as coding and robotics in the school's Makerspace area. These activities allow students to grow in their ability to think creatively and cooperatively. And it looks like they all had a lot of fun in those activities. So keep up the good work. We're pleased to announce that nine students within our district were honored as winners of Oshkosh's 20th Annual Essay Contest honoring the life of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. In addition, three of our schools received $400 for having the most participants at each grade level. So congratulations to Oshkosh North, Merrill Middle School, and Oaklawn Elementary. A special thank you to all the students and teachers who participated in this important And also a note, we have our COVID updates and so we are making a significant transition in our process throughout the pandemic. So we're moving to a face coverings optional environment as of Saturday, February 26th. So the last day for our mask, face coverings requirement will be Friday, February 25th in a couple of days. Our face coverings will be used as a temporary mitigation measure for 10 calendar days in a couple of circumstances. One, if we have elementary classrooms have one or more active cases of COVID-19, or if the middle school or high school reaches a point where 2% or more of the student population are considered active cases. So those are our safeguards if we do have an uptick in our COVID cases. The school district COVID dashboard has been and will continue to be updated to reflect the face coverings requirement thresholds. Each elementary school will list the number of classrooms with one or more positive cases. And each middle school and high school will have a list of the positive cases and the number of cases it would make up to get to that 2% threshold. So that dashboard will be updated by the end of the day each Friday and so community members can help monitor that as we're moving forward. But that'll be a significant step forward and we just want to, you know, thank our partnership with the Woinibago County Health Department, our local districts, and especially our students and parents for their cooperation and patience through these difficult times. We're certainly in a much better spot than we were a month ago and we believe that this is the right step to take at this point in time. So. And then just finally, just a list of activities since our last board meeting. So it continues to be a fun place to work and active in the community. So thanks for the time to be able to share that.
Thank you. Next up, we have district administrator supplemental reports. We have one report this evening. It's the Achievement Gap Reduction, AGR, report, and it'll be led by Dr. Brown.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So as you know, we have our mid-year results for the Achievement Gap Reduction schools and those include Washington Elementary, Webster Stanley Elementary, Roosevelt, and Jefferson. And so with this, you will see the mid-year results. I think it's important to know that these are based on end of the year and also to know that not all of our students are assessed mid-year. So for example, when I looked at second grade, some of them it almost looked like there wasn't any growth, but that's because most of the kids were proficient at the beginning of the year. And then as the year goes, like the point of what they need to reach is different, but we don't assess them mid-year because they were on track at the beginning of the year, if that makes sense. So really, at the end of the year, you will get to see the true growth that's happening at our elementary schools that participate in this.
Wonderful.
Yes, Dr. Herzog.
I do have a question. Are there plans underway to provide additional resources? That could be staff or time in the summer to assist students in those schools or is...
We do already have, well, I shouldn't say at those schools. So at Washington, you know, the Summer Klein program is happening. But if you're, are you asking for additional Summer Klein-type programs? Are you asking...
Any kind of program to assist these students who need perhaps a little extra time or other resources to hopefully get closer to grade level.
So one of the things that we are piloting right now is something called Littera Tutoring. And depending on what the results are that we see from that, that is something that we talked about, helping support our schools in the CLC programs in order to give that extra support there as well. So we will know more about that when we see the results of that happening and that's supposed to begin, we are hoping this week, but we're thinking it's going to be next week that we start that.
Thank you.
Can you describe just a little bit about what that program is?
Yeah, Littera Tutoring is, there are people who have been trained in different pieces. Some of them is, some of them are trained, well, they're trained in all areas, but it will either focus on foundational reading skills or fiction or nonfiction. And they do an assessment with the students, this is all virtual, to see where they're going to start with the students. And then they are tutoring the child via screen and then doing different assessments throughout. So that is what we are going to take a look at. It's beautiful because it's one-on-one and it's providing that service right now. So we are trying that out at all of our elementary schools, 10 students at every elementary school. And so we'll be taking a look at the assessment results and seeing what kind of growth we have in order to know if that's something we shall continue with.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, that's my question.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next up, we are at other reports. This is an opportunity for community, I'm sorry, committee chairs to provide a report in relation to the committee work that's being done. So I believe I saw that there should be a policy and governance and education committee and a legislative committee report. Is that correct?
And facilities.
And facilities. Okay. And so let's, why don't we start with facilities?
Oh, all right. Thank you. The Facilities Committee has been very active. We've had three meetings over the last month. January 25th, we met with various people, including Dr. Davis and Mr. Nihans and Dr. Jones. We were asked, add two categories to the NTEA or Non Teaching Education Association Group to bring the district in a better competitive place to hire journeyman-level employees so that they can take the master's degree exam, master's exam to advance to the next level in the matrix. We also talked about outdoor signage for the new Vell Phillips Middle School. The signage is being considered to be 32 square feet, supported by four-by-fours. The sign will have a rendering of the school and will thank the community for all their ongoing support. We also had a lengthy discussion about the Sheldon Nature Area Maintenance at Oakwood Elementary. The DNR has recently made the recommendation to remove all the ash trees from the Sheldon Nature Area due to the green ash borer. It's estimated that 90% of the seven acres are ash trees. So we've asked for a plan that will determine how to accomplish that while keeping the community involved and probably replacing those ash trees with others. We also had a budget variance report at that meeting. District revenues are slightly ahead of projections due mostly to state revenues tracking higher. We also met on February 2nd where we talked about bids for the Vell Phillips Middle School as well as the Secure Entrance Project that was part of the 2020 referendum. This has been widely covered in the media already, but to summarize very quickly, there's been a substantial increase in the price of materials, labor, and shipping of materials since November 2020 resulting in higher prices. So in order to keep that project on track, the consensus was to redirect some of the money from the Secured Entrance Project as well as to value engineer or see how we could realize some cost savings without sacrificing quality in the project. However, the committee is very committed to the Secure Entrances Project. Part of the challenge right now is that board policy requires two bids for a construction project. We only received one. So we are committed as a district to rebidding that and getting the process going in this fall and early winter of 2022. And finally, we met today, Wednesday, February 23rd, where we are recommending that we increase the compensation for those who are doing driver's education behind the wheel so that the pay rate for the summer is more consistent with the pay rate during the school year, the school year is more consistent with the summer pay. We also talked about the current Energy Management Committee and possibly rolling that into the Facilities Committee. And then we had a lengthy discussion on Phases Two and Three of the consolidation plan. That is the long-range plan that was adopted by the Board in, I believe it was January 2020. We are in Phase One right now with the Vell Phillips Middle School and plans are underway for the development of the North Side Elementary School. Phases Two and Three deal with not only looking at South Park and some consolidation of elementary schools and possibly additions to a few of those schools, and then Phase Three would be looking at West High. However, we also talked about how we would blend some of those ideas with the current Facilities Advisory Committee 2.0, which is looking at athletic facilities, both indoor and out, as well as fine arts facilities. And our next meeting will be March 17th. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you for that. How about the Education Committee?
So we met on Thursday, February 10th. We had two students from Oshkosh West, Anika and Simone, who came and talked to us about their voter education initiative, which they had been here for us previously. They now have an Assembly Bill 460 in this, you know, at the state. It's, we found out it's not, it hasn't moved, but it's there. And their goal of what the bill would ask for is it would require one hour of voter education to be taught every year from kindergarten through 12th grade as part of the social studies curriculum. So one hour an entire, you know, school year to talk about that. And, you know, we talked about ways that we can support and things that we can do to try to help to push that along. You know, they've already gone into some of the schools here. I know my son is in fourth grade and I shared with them that he was a part of that when they were able to go in and talk about some of that. So it's just, you know, an important thing that they're pushing for. of that. So it's just, you know, an important thing that they're pushing for, which I give them a lot of credit. And it's, it's a really good idea that, that we do, and we try to help them. So we talked just about that, and what we could do to help. Next meeting is scheduled for March 4th, where we will discuss literacy.
Wonderful. Thank you. Next up, policy and governance, please.
All right. As you can see in your packets, we had a lot of policies to go over. I think we're voting on 36 tonight. The good news is, a lot of them were kind of duplicates, where the changes we made were the same, and three policies in a row, over and over and over again. So I'll just highlight the ones that had bulky changes or updates. First, we also had the committee discussion about what to do with the Energy Management Committee. We were the ones that recommended that the Facility and Finance Committee discuss that, whether or not they felt like they could take on that as a subcommittee. A little history about the Energy Management Committee. It was started as a result of Act 32, and because those grants no longer exist, that's why we're looking at changing how this committee functions. We used the grants from that Act 32 to replace 90% of our mechanical HVAC equipment over the years. So it was definitely a very successful committee when it was using those grants. The other big updates that we had, had to do with board member bylaws. There was an update to board member information requests. We had, actually, maybe this one is a new, that's right, this one is a new policy. We had reviewed it previously, almost a year ago. And we did not take it on at that time, but it came back to us, and we did decide to adopt it. That's our recommendation for tonight, that we all vote in favor of taking that policy. The new policy establishes protocols for dealing with board member requests for information. It distinguishes between requests that should be made public, like a public record request by a citizen, and those that the board asks for that require a lot of administrative time and research. I think one of the reasons we didn't adopt this in the past is we were going through transitions with new board members, and also a new superintendent. So it was good to hear from Dr. Davis on what he thought about these bylaws that we had previously reviewed. And another one was about authority of individual board members. That policy was just updated to collude reference to our authority to request information. We had a policy titled Board Member Ethics, and we are recommending that that be deleted, because we are now adopting a policy called Board Member Behavior and Code of Conduct. When we have the most up-to-date policies that Neela recommends, we're more likely to get updates on new laws and new legal advice. So we think it's best to go with the most current policies. There was a lot of overlap in those policies, so we, Board Member Ethics is definitely still covered. It's just now going to be covered under Board Member Behavior and Code of Conduct. The last two ones that kind of had to do with board member expectations was Board Member Anti-Harassment. It was involved, it was revised, sorry, to remove unnecessary language at the end of the policy. And then Board Staff Communications was updated to have references to some of our new policies that we've adopted. So those were the bulky ones that took up the majority of our discuss, our discussion. A lot of the other policies, I think, like 12 of them, were updated to meet new Title I regulations. And two, since Dr. Pinkston has left us to update the contact information, when people do have concerns about nondiscrimination and equal opportunity employment, or prohibition against disability discrimination, or employee anti-harassment, there was a long list of them. And now we have the contact number of Julie Conrad in there, and I'm sure when we get a new HR Director, we will update all of these again to have their new information. That's kind of the, one of the big responsibilities of the Policy Committee, is just to make sure that we have the most up-to-date legal references, the most up-to-date contact information. So let me see if there were other policies. Yeah, Employment of Professional Staff and Ethics of Conflict of Interest, were all updated again, just to meet the newest legal standards. We're recommending that we delete the policy on substance abuse. There were two of them, because the content is outdated. But we had a recommendation to update policies about the use of tobacco, nicotine, and related products, and those were updated with new and current definitions. Staff Dress and Grooming has been updated to be, this is one that I really liked, to be more consistent with staff diversity. So to be a more inclusive workplace. Let's see, this was like eight pages, but I hit all the high points. So we'll be voting on all those tonight.
All right. Wonderful. And then finally, we are, we have an update from the Legislative Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Peschall. Legislative Committee met on Thursday, January 27th, and we had three major topic areas. We talked about the potential of getting paid student teaching, mental health services that are currently offered in the district, and voucher transparency. The first topic, we heard from Dr. Davis, who attended an intergovernmental meeting with local legislators and local government officials, where the concept of a four-year education degree, including paid student teaching, was discussed. The group seemed receptive to the idea. Dr. Davis has also met with representatives from the university to discuss the topic, with the idea of starting locally and building towards statewide university adoption. Some progress has been made by Dr. Linda Holling at UWO, who has been working toward a credit, a reduction in credit requirements. And I think this is really exciting, and I'd like to congratulate Dr. Davis on working on, on this, because getting paid student teaching for our teachers would definitely go a long way into attracting and retaining more teachers. So. The second topic, I would like to thank Mr. Cammerer, who came and gave us a really great update on the three tiers of mental health services that we are providing to our students. And I won't go over in all of them in detail, but we are doing a lot of great things. And hopefully, you all saw the message that we are now providing onsite psychiatric care at our high schools, which is really exciting, and he had mentioned that in his presentation. We talked about some of the challenges, especially in Tier Three resources, because there's just a shortage of applicants and therapists out there right now. And that the need and demand for mental health services is at an all-time high. And so we're running into what everybody is running into, which is lack of therapists, lack of places, and long waiting lists for services, which is unfortunate. We also talked about the transparency of the verification process for putting the vouchers on our tax bills next year on an annual basis. We're still making sure that that is in the forefront, because it did kind of fall through the cracks a little bit with the pandemic, but we are back on track, and we think we can make it happen this year. We also did, as we do every meeting, an update on committee members' meetings with legislators. Dr. Herzog had met with Senator Fian, and she has, did you, did he participate in the Read Your Heart Out event at Webster? Am I reading that correctly?
No.
Okay.
He wasn't able to attend.
He wasn't able to attend. Okay. Yeah, I thought so. And then we talked about how the event of the day at the Capitol was canceled again this year, but we are continuing to go to Legislative Breakfast, which we find very informative and great networking. So if any of the board members would like to go, Sherry always sends out a note about them. Our next meeting is tomorrow at 8:30, and we will be discussing talking points for the district's budget story. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you for all of your reports, and all of the work that you put into our committees. So, thank you. All right, next up, we have non-agenda-related public forum. Do we have people in the waiting room?
We do not.
Okay. I'm at a loss, because I think this is the first time in my, in my role as the President, that we haven't had anyone. Do I still, should I still read this, or...
I don't know that you need to.
I don't know that I, okay. All right. Well, so.
I heard that.
So as we have no one here for non-agenda-related public forum, as well as agenda-related public forum, I'm going to forego the reading of the procedures and protocols related to the public forum, and move on to the next agenda item, which is our Consent Resolution Agenda.
Move that the consent agenda be noticed and presented as written.
So, and waiving of the reading?
Yes, please.
All right.
Second.
Second. Is that, is that clear, Eileen?
I believe so. So we have Wyman moved, and then we had Christopher.
There's three of them.
Whatever one you want.
Well, we'll say Chris, Mr. Wright.
Whatever one you want.
All right. So then, I would accept a roll call.
Selagi.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Carnes.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. First, I'm going to start off with a thank you of the waiving of the reading of that. And we're going to move on to individually considered resolutions, which is Resolution Number 12. It reads, be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education...
Bob, can I ask a question? We voted to waive the reading. We have to vote now to pass it, right?
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Good call.
Yes, we did. Thank you. I got ahead of myself. Please call the roll on the consent agenda.
Wright.
Yes.
Wyman.
Yes.
Carlin.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Carnes.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Selagi.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. And thank you for the point of order. All right, let's try this again. Individually considered resolutions. Resolution Number 12, be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the retirements as filed with the Secretary of Board of Education. Looking for a motion.
So move, second.
Moved by Herzog, seconded by Carlin. Looking for discussion. Dr. Herzog, go ahead.
Thank you. I always find this to be a bittersweet moment, because we have an opportunity to thank and be happy with people we are losing. At the same time, we are losing some really good people. And if my math serves me correctly, these six individuals have served the students and their families, and our staff, for a total of over 130 years. So we're losing a lot of institutional memory as these people go out the door. And one of the things that also struck me about this list, is that it represents so many individuals from various employee groups within the system. We have a teacher, we have an administrative assistant, we have a custodian, a cook helper, and a office technical. Valerie Gebel is, has been with the central office for approximately 28 years. She's been in the special ed area during that time, and we certainly wish her a long, healthy, and, and a happy retirement. Dan Gamal has been a building custodian in the district, serving in multiple buildings. Some of you may remember, a couple of years ago, that Dan was chosen as Custodian of the Year. It must have been before the pictures that are all over there. So we wish Dan also a happy, safe, and, and healthy retirement. Jodi Yari is leaving the district after roughly 32 years of service. This one is very personal to me, because when I was a full-time administrator in this office, she was one of my early hires within the system. She started as a English as a second language teacher in the district, moved on into regular ed classrooms at both Merrill L., and now at Lakeside School. So I find it very difficult to believe that she's old enough to retire, since I hired her, but she assures me that she is. So again, we wish her all the best in retirement. May it be long, healthy, and happy. John Neusse Stifter is retiring as a cook helper at the middle school, high school level, currently at Oshkosh West. And similarly, we wish John all the best for a wonderful retirement, with good health and happiness moving forward. Scott Schwartz is a building custodian over at Franklin Elementary School. He's been a mainstay there for many years, and is retiring with approximately 33 years' service. And we wish him all the best as he moves on into this next age and stage of life. May it be a long, healthy, and happy one. And finally, on the list is Sue Warzac. Sue Warzac is retiring as a 41-week office technical, serving the Alps Program. I think I first met her when she was at Merrill Elementary, when the program was over there, and has moved on to Perry Tipler, when it relocated. She's been doing the newsletter and a variety of things, and is going to be sorely missed, as our, as is everyone on this list. So we want to wish Sue the very best in, in her retirement. May it be long, healthy, and, and happy. So to these individuals, we certainly wish them the best, and thank them sincerely for their dedication to the student staff and the school district.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you for those comments, Dr. Herzog.
You're welcome.
All right. Then I would accept the roll call.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Carnes.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Selagi.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. All right. We will be moving on to requests for future agenda items. Any requests from anyone?
Oh, I had one, and I forgot last time.
I can, I, I actually have a request, so if you want me to go ahead, you can, you can have it.
Yeah, please do.
So my request is born in the report that Mr. Carnes just gave to us about students being engaged in the legislative process of, of furthering education, about voting in the Oshkosh Area School District. And so my thought was, was wondering whether we might be able to provide a supportive resolution to their efforts, and to that, to that Assembly Bill as well. I, I think we would also probably agree that an hour isn't enough, you know, maybe at an elementary level, but as we, you know, as kids get a little bit older, maybe it's a little bit more than that. Maybe they have the opportunity to get some real-world education experience as they get older, doing that. But I guess, so my future agenda item would be to work with Dr. Davis to create a supportive resolution for that Assembly Bill, that also acknowledges the work that our students are doing on behalf of it.
Can I respond to that, since we already, since I already discussed this item earlier? Okay. I missed out...
Well, we, we can't converse about it, so.
Okay, then I'll make a statement about, that I did not clarify from the report, that Dr. Herzog was going to reach out to Wasby as well, to see if there were ways that we could do something similar to what you had mentioned.
Okay.
But maybe there's more as well that we can come up with.
Sure.
But there is other alternatives that we are going to do to push that, and I apologize for leaving that out.
That's okay. I'm glad that I brought it up, so that it jogged your memory. So.
And Dr. Davis was going to do some follow-up as well.
All right. Any other future agenda items?
I found mine.
Okay. Go ahead.
This agenda item was born out of a question that was posed to us at CISA 6, where they said, what are things that you want to talk about, that you can never talk about in board meetings, because unless you're publicly noted, to talk about them. And so this was one of the things that I had wanted to talk about. And I'm going to put it out there, and it doesn't mean we have to do it, but it's about expulsions. And obviously, you know, we've seen a few expulsions this year. And one of the questions I had was, is it related to behavioral problems as a result of the pandemic, because we were in virtual for so long? Or I kind of wanted to just have a discussion about our expulsion process, and, and why we've seen the number that we have seen this year. That was kind of one of the things. And I realize this is kind of a touchy subject, so I will defer to leadership on how to move forward with that. But that was one thing that I, that was kind of, came to the forefront at that CISA training class that we went to, is...
No, I, I think it's, I think it's an important thing, and, and we'll consult with Dr. Davis to, to figure out the best avenue to discuss it. So.
Okay, thank you.
So, appreciate you bringing it up.
Thank you.
So it's definitely, you're right, it's one of those harder subjects to talk about. It's a touchy thing, but it's definitely an important item to be, to be talking about, because we are definitely seeing more of them.
And I think educating the public on the process, maybe, too, is something that might be valuable, so that the public understands that when these happen, it's a long process.
Sure. Nope. Duly noted. Thank you. Any other last opportunities for future agenda items for this meeting? Seeing none, we will move on to any announcements. Go ahead.
I'll make one, because like Mr. Carnes, there's one part of my committee report I forgot to read. Our next meeting is March 2nd at 8 o'clock, and I wanted to note that we will review the...
we will review the policy about out-of-attendance area enrollment, because that was asked by a public member that spoke up at our last board meeting, that we review that. So I just wanted to make sure it's noted, we are listening, and we'll address it.
Just to clarify, which, which committee meeting are you?
The policy. Did I not say anything? Yeah, thank you. Because I knew you guys on the OBS. For the public, I should point that out. It's the Policy Committee. Yes.
Thank you. Any other, go ahead.
So I'm going to flip back to the last board meeting. Just a statement for myself. I tell my kids the hardest thing to do in this world is to apologize when you're wrong. At the last board meeting, we had a discussion about the new middle school, how we were over budget. We also had a discussion about the delaying of the security project that we, again, discussed tonight, and we talked about it at the last meeting. During the discussion, I had mentioned that we shouldn't be responding to a story, which I called untrue or inaccurate. After reviewing the story, I realized the story was technically accurate based on the board packet of information. So for that, I apologize. I, it's not my intent to bash our local media or say anything in that way. So from that, I sincerely apologize for my statement, claiming that it was untrue. Saying that to the community as well, I think it's important to know that what's in the board packet, what comes out, isn't finalized until we get the opportunity to discuss it, as we saw with the naming of the new middle school, and with other things, that sometimes different conversations take place. So from that standpoint, you know, I like it if we have the opportunity to discuss that, and then, and then go from there. But for my part, I, again, apologize for my statement.
All right. Any other announcements? All right, seeing none. All right, so I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn to executive session after I read the notions for our executive session. So we'll be looking for a motion to adjourn to executive session to consider the disciplinary.
I move to waive the reading.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Carnes, seconded by Wright. Please call the roll on the waiving of the reading.
Carlin.
Aye.
Herzog.
No, I think it's short enough. It's okay to read it.
Carnes.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Selagi.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carnes, seconded by Selagi. Please call the roll.
Herzog.
Aye.
Carnes.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Selagi.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
Meeting has adjourned to executive session.
Thank you.
Got to bang the gavel.